And now we move to 15 years of service with the county from the District Attorney's Office, Charlene Nelson. Congratulations. And moving to 20 years of service with the County Manager's Office, Julie Guerrero-Getch. Congratulations. And our final recipient today with 25 years of service from juvenile probation, Darren Hammer. Come on forward. Does it feel like 25 years?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to everyone. 6B, consideration and possible action, acceptance of renewal proposal from Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool, and the approval of payment for fiscal year 2024-2025 funds. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Chris Bros, Churchill County Human Resources. So the item in front of you today is the acceptance of the renewal for PoolPact. As you guys are aware, PoolPact supplies us with our property and liability insurance, as well as several other goodies that we have, such as help to HR for online and in-person training, cybersecurity assessments, onsite risk management programs, law enforcement, and fire protection training, et cetera, et cetera. So we have a 13.47% increase over last year. What that means is overall, the cost is $773,470.76, which is a combination of both the county's portion and CCCOM. The county's portion of that is $585,981.45, again, which is a 13.47% increase. So the county's increase over last year is $61,794.58. We do have this in the budget. It came in a little higher than we thought it was going to be. I also have members from PoolPact here that I believe have a short little presentation. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and they'll probably get answered via PoolPact representatives, so.
Can we blame Alan for the increase?
We always do, yeah.
Hi, Chris Rogney with EH Church Insurance for the record. Chris kind of went over the majority of it. I just kind of wanted to speak on that increase. We are seeing some relief in the reinsurance market and just across the board. So Pool came in relatively flat on the actual rate for insurance with a 2.5% rate increase. The majority of the increase is from increase in exposures. The biggest one being increase in property values. So we get appraisals and make changes to the schedule throughout the year. And so with vehicles and buildings and personal property inside the buildings and everything, a pretty substantial increase in that number of $14,624,000. So that's your biggest piece. There was a bump in some payroll, but small compared to the rest of it. And then the changes in vehicles after completing the whole renewal process. So overall, although an increase is never good, the fact that the increase is due to exposure versus rate is a good thing. Seeing some relief in the industry on that end comes as a welcome surprise. So if anybody has any questions for me, Chris went over the majority of my proposal on there, so. Oh, no, you're good, thank you.
Any question for the Chris's? Comments? Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I move to accept the renewal proposal from Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool and approve payment from fiscal year 2024-2025 funds.
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appointment 6C?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize for being so wordy today.
Appointment 6C, consideration of possible action, review and approval of OR 92-17A, marijuana tax revenue and opioid settlement funding for fiscal year 2025. Shannon?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. For the record, Shannon Nurse, Churchill County Social Services. For numerous years previously, we have gone over the RO 92 marijuana tax revenue. So what we've did is it was advised by the Board of Health. We would actually put these out to individuals that provide prevention efforts within the community. Once the Board of Health was abolished and it went to the Central Nevada Health District, it now comes to the Commission. So what we do is put in these requests. We look at the different projects they have, the funding that's available. The marijuana tax revenue is about $88,000 a year. It's not a huge amount of money. So in previous years, we would also utilize some of the mental health dollars that were in the Social Services budget. This year, I'm bringing for you actually a proposal to use some of the opioid settlement dollars. We worked diligently to map out the eligibility and uses through all the different settlements. So as you will see, I don't know if Pam wants to flip it.
I'm sorry, what? Do you want me to go to the?
Yeah, if you could just go to the recommendation would be great.
Okay, so you want the funding matrix?
Yes, please.
Is that what you want?
Perfect. So this year, we did receive two requests. One was from the Churchill Community Coalition for the Too Good for Drugs program. And then one was for the Churchill County School District Mental Health Project. So is what I am recommending that we do this year is we fund the Churchill Community Coalition, $19,453.51 from the marijuana tax revenue. That was a fully fund their request to keep the Too Good for Drugs program. And then when you look at the, excuse me, the Churchill County School District, they request $25,200. Theirs is not only just mental health and substance prevention, it's looking at access for kids and what are they experiencing in trauma at home. And so when I looked at that one, I did recommend that we use the marijuana tax revenue of the, also the 25,200. Then is what would happen is Churchill County Social Services, we would reduce our amount and take some of the opioid settlement for the resource lays on match. So we're not tapping into the mental health budget at this time because we, as you know, are going through our mental health, excuse me, I just completely lost it. Our mental health planning project will intercept model and recommendations. That would allow us to have some funds there to utilize to serve that purpose. If there's any questions, I can answer.
Any questions or comments for Shannon?
So Shannon, new frontier didn't request any this year?
They did not.
You know why?
No, they only received $450 last year, and I think as they're going through their expansion, they said if you have money to help with their expansion, but that's not the funds that we provide through this. So they did not submit.
Any other questions? Any public comment? Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the funding allocations as presented and to authorize the Director of Social Services to execute the agreements as required.
Second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Shannon. 6D, consideration and possible action, approval of the issuance of a notice of award for the Churchill County Sheriff's Storage Remodel Project, PWPC H 2024-310, to Simmerson Construction LLC at the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $951,200, and to provide a contingency of $100,000. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members, Randy Hines, Churchill County Public Works Director. This project was put out to bid on April 18th with a mandatory through bid conference on April 26th. During the bidding process, Converse Consultants performed an asbestos and lead paint survey in the old jail area. This survey was provided to the contractors to include any asbestos and lead paint remediation in their bids. Simmerson, oh, on June 7th, the county received two bids for the project, one from Simmerson Construction, the other for PEC Contracting and Engineering. And after review of each bid, it was determined that Simmerson Construction LLC was the lowest responsible bidder with a bid of $951,200. We're also requesting an additional $100,000 in contingency funds to cover any unexpected issues that may arise during construction.
That second bid, what? Someone explain that one to me?
So those guys, they were really struggling at the end. They were trying to contact a bunch of people, and I just think they threw a number out there to see if they catch it.
Gotcha.
We went back to the architect, met with them. They had an engineer's estimate of like 850. So it was just, it was just an oddball number. With two bids, it really stands out, so.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments for Randy? Is there any public comment? Sheriff, did you want to add anything? Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Did you already look at all the plans already, Sheriff, for what they want? It's all about the same, okay.
Perfect. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to issue a notice of award for the Churchill County Sheriff's Storage Remodel Project to Simmerson Construction LLC as the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $951,200 with $100,000 contingency and approve the County Manager to execute a contract and any change orders for the same.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Randy. Did anyone want to pull any of the letters received? If not, we'll move to Old Business 8A, consideration and possible action, renewal of a professional service contract with Savon Consulting LLC on an as-needed hourly basis at the rate of $75 per hour for the provisions of service acting as Churchill County's appointed council program coordinator to support its indigent defense service program effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. Joe, you want to take this one?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Joe Sanford for the record. Savon Consulting assists us in the provision of indigent defense services and works as our liaison with the Department of Indigent Defense. She's been doing that essentially for the last couple of years, and we would request to renew her contract.
Any questions or comments for Joe? If not, a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of the contract with Savon Consulting LLC for the fiscal year of 2025 for the provision of professional services acting as Churchill County's appointed council program coordinator to support its indigent defense services program and to authorize the County Manager to execute it.
Second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Moving on to New Business 9A, consideration and possible action, canvas of the 2024 Churchill County Official Primary Election held on June 11th, 2024. Linda?
Good afternoon, members of the board. Linda Rothery, Churchill County Clerk Treasurer for the record. Before you is the canvas of our vote for the 2020, what year are we in? I'm sorry, 24 primary election. And I am looking for board approval and can answer any questions.
Is there any questions or comments for Linda? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, a motion, please.
I move to accept the canvas of the votes of the official Churchill County Primary Election held on June 11th, 2024 and directing the clerk to enter the abstract of the results as required by statutes.
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
9B, consideration and possible action, approval of the fiscal year-end monetary transfer for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. Sherry?
Thank you. The first item that I'm going to talk about is monetary transfers. This is transferring money from one fund to another. The first amount is we opened the opiate litigation fund. So the funds that were put into social services were transferring approximately $219,000. And for the general fund, we spent about $1 million on getting the Navy money. And of that, there was $670,000 for Casey and Cassidy and Associates and about $345,000 for Resource Concepts. So as to, as part of the tringup of the general fund, I am requesting that we transfer $1 million from the Navy money to the general fund in the current fiscal year. And then extraordinary repairs, we transform money that fees from Justice Court are put into this fund to reimburse the county for the remodel of the old court. And those funds are lesser, are not as high as they have been. So I'm reducing the transfer $5,000. And that's the monetary transfers. Do you have any questions?
Any questions or comments for Sherry? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year-end monetary transfers for the Comptroller's Recommendations.
Second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. New Business? Thank you, Sherry. New Business 6C, or New Business 9C, consideration and possible action, approval of the automatic budget augmentation number one for grants for fiscal year 2023-2024.
Thank you. This is, these are automatic for expenditures that come out through the grants because we never know exactly how much we're going to get. And so this is just basically a housekeeping item to augment the budget for the grant income.
Any questions or comments for Sherry? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, a motion.
I move to approve and note in the minutes the automatic augmentation for grants received by Churchill County for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024.
Second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. 9D, consideration and possible action, budget transfer number one for fiscal year 2023-2024. Sherry?
Hi, it's me again. And this is budget transfers. This is in between just line items within the funds, just to make sure that it doesn't go over budget in different areas. There is no increase in budget for these items. And so I hope you approve that, please.
Any questions or comments? Any public comment? A motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget transfers as submitted and make the transfers part of the official minutes of the Board of County Commissioners as required by the Local Government Budget Act.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. 9E, consideration and possible action, adoption of Resolution 11-2024, which seeks to augment the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget in accordance with the Nevada revised statute. Sherry?
Thank you again. Okay, the first items that are published in the newspaper are accounts that get ad valorem tax money. And I'm requesting that we put for, augment for $403,000 for the general fund. That had to do with upgrades in the commissioners' chambers of the audio and the SOSS TV, copier for Justice Court, JPO. They had, they had a pact change because they are law enforcement. So their expenses went up in that area. Public Defender Planning had new software, and there was cemetery expansion. So that's what's going into the general fund. And Social Services, there was just some tweaking there for salaries within the public health and contracted services in social service welfare. And then for the fire equipment fund, we bought the two fire trucks, which came to $2,126,441,000. And so it went over budget a little bit in the current fiscal year because we made a deposit in 22 of 720,000, and the remainder was 1.4 million in the current year. So those are the funds that are affected that have ad valorem funds going into them. And then below the yellow line, which is not up there, are the other funds that are needing additional money due to expenditures. And we can go through them. The Road Department had capital outlay for their maintenance programs. Parks and Rec had various issues within capital outlay, marketing. Then we go down to restitution. We had some large restitutions that came through this year. Water Resources, the groundwater basin fee was higher, so I had to augment for that. The opiate settlement fund had no budget, so we had to put a budget there. The infrastructure tax fund, that had to be increased due to additional TDRs that have come through in this year. Those large ones that right at the end of the fiscal year. To date, the county has spent $4.9 million on TDR. That's their portion. Let's see, building reserve, we had, the public defenders improvements are going through there, so that's increasing those costs. And then we also had the purchase of the Casey Road and the Mida Road properties. And then the extraordinary repairs, we have that for the JPO new camera system. And so that's a detail of what's going on with those.
Any questions or comments? I did have one question, Sherry. When was DIDS, have they mentioned when that reimbursement would come back through? Is that when the work is completed, or?
This is Jim Barbie for the record. So they can't direct reimburse the cost of the improvements on the building, but we can charge a lease. So we're putting a lease fee in the ongoing cost that can be reimbursed through DIDS.
Thank you, Jim. Any other questions or comments? Is there any public comment? A motion, please.
I move to adopt Resolution 11-2024, which augments the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget in accordance with the provisions of the Local Government Budget Act in NRS Chapter 354, furthermore directing the Comptroller's Office to forward the necessary documentation to the Department of Taxation to be in compliance with the applicable Nevada revised statutes.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Sherry. F, consideration and possible action, approval of a settlement agreement with Kroger for the opioid-related claims pursuant to the One Nevada Agreement. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Joe Sanford with the District Attorney's Office for the record. Kroger is a grocery chain that has reached a national settlement to resolve all of their opiate claims. Nevada's piece is going to be about 27 million. The One Nevada Agreement splits that up for all of the complainants within Nevada. Our piece is going to be a little over $115,000 over 11 years. It's $10,624.27 per year. It'll have similar requirements for use to all of our other monies.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions or comments? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve and direct the Chair to sign a settlement agreement with Kroger pursuant to the One Nevada Agreement.
Second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. 9G, consideration and possible action, approval of a revised job description and pay grade for a building official. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Chris Bros for the record. So the item in front of you is the approval of the revised job description for the building official. The Building Department was set up as a standalone department for a number of years. Since the retirement of Marie Henson as the building official and the reorganization to have the Building Department under the oversight of the Public Works Director, we felt that some of the responsibilities that the previous building official had would not be necessary as those would be undertaken by the Public Works Director, namely things like preparation of budgets, recruiting, termination, hiring, firing, those sort of things will all be done by the Public Works Director, which at one point in time was done by the building official. So we're requesting to approve the revised job description, which removes some of those responsibilities, adjust the pay grade to pay grade 61, and also reduce that position from an exempt to a non-exempt position as this is not a department head position anymore. And we're also requesting to authorize hiring for this position. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions or comments for Chris? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the revised job description for a building official, assign it to pay 61, pay grade 61, and authorize the hiring for the position.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. 9H, consideration and possible action, approval of the pay tables for fiscal year 2024-2025. Chris?
Thank you, Chris Bros, again. So this is our request to approve the pay tables for fiscal year 24 and 25. So with the absence of a COLA, or sorry, a general adjustment, the pay tables for general employees stays the same. There are a few changes that are being made. One of those is there's an increase in base pay for the lifeguards. That has a lot to do with the increase in Nevada minimum wage. There's also the moving of the camp counselors from a grade 18 to a grade 23. Once again, that is a result of the Nevada minimum wage increase, as well as moving employees that were already above the increase, above that $12 to kind of maintain that gap. Moving the Recreation Leader 1 and Recreation Leader 2 positions from a grade 23 and 25 respectively to a 28 and 30 respectively. Again, that's to maintain that gap between a camp counselor and the supervisory or leadership position. And then also an increase to the base pay for the interns. I think they were at 1125 or 1150, and they are moving up to the minimum wage of $12. There's also a couple of changes having to do with the collective bargaining agreements. Obviously, those were negotiated last year and the year prior. And so the deputies in charge and sergeants, they're in their second year of a two-year collective bargaining agreement, which calls for a 6% increase. So that's reflected in the pay tables. As far as the dispatchers and the supervisors for the dispatchers, they're in their third year of a three-year collective bargaining agreement, and their agreement calls for a 2% increase for fiscal year 24-25. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments for Chris? Is there any public comment? A motion, please.
I move to approve the pay tables for fiscal year 2024-2025 as submitted effective July 8, 2024, reflecting the following. One, no increase to the grade step table as no general adjustment was approved in the budget. Two, an increase in base pay for lifeguards using $14.17 an hour for base pay to comply with the new Nevada minimum wage and to stay market competitive. Three, moving camp counselors from grade 18 to grade 23 to comply with the new Nevada minimum wage and to stay market competitive. Four, moving Recreation Leader 1 and Recreation Leader 2 from grades 23 and grade 25 to grade 28 and grade 30 respectively in order to maintain the grade gap with the camp counselors. And five, an increase in base pay for interns using $12 an hour as a base rate of pay to comply with the new Nevada minimum wage.
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. 9I, consideration and possible action, approval of job description and pay grade for Human Resource Generalist and reclassification of Kim Bronzema, Human Resource Specialist to the new position effective July 8, 2024. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chris Bros for the record. So we're requesting the approval of a new position, a new job description for an HR Generalist and to reclassify Kim Bronzema, who is currently our HR Specialist, to that position. Our current HR Specialist, Kim, she's worked for the county for two years, and she's learned many of the day-to-day functions. The Specialist is an entry-level position within the HR Department. She has gained a tremendous amount of experience in those last, in those last two years, as well as receiving her SHRM certification, which was not required as a Specialist, but is required as a Generalist. So we are requesting that you approve the job description for the HR Generalist and reclassify Kim Bronzema to that position effective July 8, 2024. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments for Chris? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the job description for Human Resource Generalist, assign it at a pay grade of 50, and to reclassify Kim Bronzema, Human Resource Specialist, to the position effective July 8, 2024.
Second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. 9J, consideration and possible action, approval of the job description and pay grade for the Human Resource Manager. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chris Bros. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chris Bros for the record. So we're requesting the approval of a job descrip- of a job description and pay grade for the human resources manager. Since the retirement of Joff Stark, the HR department finds itself shorthanded to handle the human resources needs for 254 current employees. By creating the Assistant County Manager/HR Director position, the county was able to fill in the vacancy. However, the Assistant County Manager/HR Director's time is split between human resources and the county manager office functions. The need for a full-time position to oversee HR department, the HR department still exists. This higher-level HR position will have responsibility for the day-to-day functioning of the HR department. While the Assistant County Manager/HR Director will have the overall responsibility for the department, someone with a deeper HR background and experience will be needed to handle the higher-level HR functions within the department. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you, oh, that being said, a pay grade of 60, 68, and authorize hiring for the position. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions or comments for Chris? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I move to approve the job description for human resources manager, assign it to pay grade 68, and authorize the hiring for the position.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Nine K, consideration and possible action, approval of job description and the pay grade for senior legal secretary and reclassification of Emily Tunsel, legal secretary, to the new position in the Public Defender's Office effective July 8, 2024. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Bros for the record. So we're requesting the approval of a new position, a senior legal secretary. So approval of a job description and a pay grade, and then as well as reclassifying Emily Tunsel to that position. Currently, the public defender has two legal secretaries. With the addition of five deputy public defender one positions resulting from the Nevada Department of Indigent Defense requirements, the senior legal secretary will be charged with leading the legal administrative efforts of the public defender's office. The job responsibilities are outlined in the job description, which is attached. Ms. Tunsel has been employed with the county since February of 2020 and has served as the legal secretary in the public defender's office since April of 2021. As the most senior, as the most senior legal secretary in the public defender's office, Ms. Tunsel has the experience that is necessary for this position. And with that, I don't think anybody is here. With that, I will answer any questions you may have on this.
Any questions or comments? Any public comment? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the job description for senior legal secretary, assigned to a pay grade of 50, and to reclassify Emily Tunsel, legal secretary, to the position in the public defender's office effective July 8, 2024.
Second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Nine L, consideration and possible action, adoption of Resolution 13-2024, authorizing an inter-fund loan of up to $1 million from the general fund to Central Nevada Health District Fund, and approval of a corresponding loan agreement with the Central Nevada Health District. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joe Sanford for the record. The Central Nevada Health District runs its operations through the CNHD Fund, which is managed by Churchill County. The Health District is operated largely by grant funds. At this time, there is a substantial amount of negative balance in the CNHD Fund that is awaiting grant funds to come in for reimbursement. It is required that by the end of the fiscal year that that fund shows a zero balance, and so this would create an inter-fund loan from the general fund to the CNHD Fund to cover that negative balance and require the Health District to repay us by August 31st.
August 31st of?
Of 2024.
2024. Is there any other questions or comments? Any public comment on this? Can I get a motion, please?
I move to adopt Resolution 13-2024 and approve the inter-fund loan agreement with the Central Nevada Health District.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Did anyone want to pull anything off the consent agenda? A motion to approve that, then.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Did anyone have anything they wanted to consider for a future agenda item? We'll go to Commissioner and Management Staff Reports. Start with you, Justin.
On Monday, I had the museum meeting, and later this evening, Stillwater Conservation District.
I was on vacation, so I was not here. Buzz? Sherri?
Nothing, thank you.
Joe?
Nothing, thanks.
Jim?
Got the opportunity right before this meeting to meet with the folks that are putting on the big roping. The barrel racing is happening right now, following the bronc event that was on Tuesday night. And so all, starting this weekend and all through next week, will be the team roping. So if you get an opportunity, the public's welcome. There's lots of booths and things to look at and concessions there over those days. And then that will be ending on Friday with DeGoya's big rodeo outside. So come out and take a look. Also, Chris and I will be traveling to Las Vegas early next week and presenting to the steering, Central Steering Committee for SNPLMA to make our final push and request to get the thumb, final thumbs up on the 31 million for the 3C, but also request they fund all eligible projects that are in front of them, which would then add back in the Osir Park and the North Main Ball Field. So we'll see. Not so sure on those last two, but we're, look to be in good shape moving forward with 31 million that would be funded this next federal fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Linda?
Just finished up a successful 2024 primary election, and I thank all the staff and election workers for all they do during elections, because there is no way we could get this done without the volunteers. So that's great. We're just going right into our general election preparation. I've got fiscal year end coming up, which is also my new tax year, so I'll be doing that in the next couple of weeks. And we've already started our 2025 legislation talks, so we've got some bills, and we're talking to Assembly people so that we can get some of that stuff put in.
Thank you. Pam?
Nothing for me.
Sheriff?
Chairman, Board, County Manager. Wanted to go over a few things. I went over some of it with the partial board that made it to the last scheduled thing, but we didn't get to go over it with all of you guys. So I wanted to give you guys kind of a quick update as to where we were at with a few projects. As you guys know, the last legislative session, there were some rules changing in regardings to voting for inmates. We worked on that. We testified in front of the legislature about that. And then when we had our earlier election, we testified with the legislature, I think it was right after you guys did. During that time, the ACLU stated that they were intending to sue most every county that was out there, because people weren't replying promptly or correctly to the law or their requests for information. We didn't want to be in that vote, so we worked closely with the ACLU, Joe, his office, Lynn and her office. And we kept refining our policies until we got every aspect of the bill met, and the ACLU was happy with that. We did refile our report as required by law. I think it was within two days after the voting. We have received confirmation that it has been received and accepted. We also got a thank you from the ACLU for our work there. There was one county that said they weren't filing the report, and they weren't going to work with them because they didn't have anybody designated as a jail administrator, which seemed very odd and kind of in your face to challenge people to a lawsuit when you don't need to. So we chose not to go that route. I think Joe thanked us, but I'm not sure on that one. We, I did go out and meet with IC of the wildfire that was happening behind Cold Springs, got a brief on what was, what had started it, how large it was, what actions they were taking to fight it. And I did get a chance to meet with the firefighters and thank them for coming in to try and work on a fire in Churchill County. Originally, about a year or so ago, maybe a little bit longer, there was a grant that came out for virtual crisis care. It was on a tablet. The tablets would be placed with our patrolmen. They would, when they met someone that was in crisis or in, at risk of committing suicide, that had not actively taken those steps to commit suicide, through the use of that tablet, they could connect that person with a care provider, so that they could talk to them, and then they could make a recommendation whether that person was to just follow up with continuity of care with a local provider, New Frontier, or other mental health office, or if they needed to be taken into custody based off of their assessment on the comments that were made. Churchill County was not part of that initially. We weren't really sure how it would work. It's worked pretty well in some other counties, and it provides a level of care that we don't have here in Churchill County. So we did reach out to them. They will be providing us with the tablets. There is no cost. We went over that with Sherri last two weeks ago. There's absolutely no cost to the county at all on these. The one thing that we did do to enhance that program was purchase some little printers for the cars, so that they can print off that continuity of care information, and we can provide it to the subject that needs the mental health. And so hopefully, we'll have that project kicked off in a month or so. They're sending them to us. I think it's next week. We'll have some in-house training for our people. But it does provide us with the option for another level of care in the community. We've met with Lana Robard, explained it to her. She's aware of the project, and she's excited about the opportunity to reach more people. It turns out that the tribal police are already on board with this, and they're already implementing it out there with some success. So we're pretty happy about that. We have been working for several years with our in-house communications program, Securus, for the inmates, to enhance some programs on the tablets that we have right now for them. During this last year at the Western States Sheriff's Association, we found a company that works with Securus that will provide all of those necessary programs for it. And so we have been working with them, and we'll have those programs hopefully implemented by the end of July. Those programs will provide us with the opportunity to have the inmates purchase a booklet. It's a workbook. It'll be a $4 charge if they can't afford it. We'll give it to them. But it'll provide their stuff, like anger management, how to be a dad. There's some DUI classes in there, and they'll be able to, once they've completed that class, be able to print off or give us, the code we can print off a certificate. That certificate can then be presented to the courts, to the District Attorney's Office, or to a public defender as needed. We do intend to have some briefing meetings with them. I've reached out to Gabby, who works for Shannon, and so we're setting up some meetings with her, because she does part of our FAST program, so that she can help make recommendations for people to go through that, that training. So we're pretty excited about the options that I'll do there. Hopefully, it'll help us with some recidivism. We had some issues with the boat at the end of last year. We were taking it off the water, because we again have high water this year. We spent some of the time over the winter doing repairs on it. They took it out yesterday, and we came back with a clean bill of health, that everything was good. There were some issues with the steering and with the throttle control, so we replaced both of those issues, or those items, cleared up the issues. So we're pretty happy about that. We had a search and rescue meeting the other day. They're up on their training. They have a few members that haven't shown up in quite a while, so they'll be reaching out to them to try and figure out if they're still on the roll books for search and rescue or not. So those numbers, their active members, might change a little bit coming up. I'll keep you advised of that. We met with a company named Permedium. We've been working with them for quite a while now to try and get it to where we can do some, move some of our CCW programming online. And then you'll have the option of going online, setting up your appointment to come in for fingerprints. You can do all that from a comfort of your home or your phone, depending on where you're at at the time. But it speeds up and gives another option for the community. I met with Stillwater Firearms Association, briefed them on that. There was a few members that were not receptive, because they don't like computers and technology. But the most of them were excited about that. We'll reach out to the rest of our CCW instructors that are in the county and let them know that they'll have that option. We did meet with CCW Subcommittee. We hosted that, along with Representative Gray and a couple of instructors out of Lyon County the other day. So we had members from Douglas County, Humboldt, Lyon County, and a few others here in Churchill County that are all part of the CCW Subcommittee. We had others zooming in from around the state. The reason for that meeting was there's been some questions, concerns raised statewide in regards to how certain counties are handling the CCW process. And so there was some discussion made. Some of the issues are not at our level. They are definitely at a legislative level. And by our level, I'm not saying Churchill County. That's not an issue. We weren't an issue with any of the stuff that was raised. We just happened to host the meeting. There are some counties that are not, that are on either extreme on how CCWs are handled. And so we needed to kind of get into a middle ground. And so I think that was worked out, and we agreed on that. But there were some issues that Senator Gray was trying to push back towards the Sheriff's Association, that we told him it was really more of a legislative issue, and that there had been bills presented before, and they had died. And so he did acknowledge that and said yes. And so they'll be working on maybe hopefully getting some of those, those changed. That's about it for what we have from the sheriff's office. Do you guys have questions at all for me?
Any questions for the sheriff? Okay. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Chris? Okay. Claims and payroll are going around. At this time, is there any public comment? Okay, we stand adjourned.